Yes, thank you. Christine Brown, City Clerk. Please state for the record if you're present after I call your name. Mayor Matthews?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quitzland?
Present.
Councilmember Dietz?
Present.
Councilmember Fantrey Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Hytopolis?
Present.
Councilmember Morrowaki?
Present.
Councilmember Schneider?
Present.
Thank you.
We also have with us the City Manager Blair King and the Deputy City Attorney Andrew Zoming. Other staff members will be part of the program. I'll begin with some land acknowledgement. We begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is within the ancestral territory of the people of Clear Salt Water, Suquamish people. Expert fishermen, canoe builders, basket weavers. The Suquamish live in harmony as the lands and waterways along Washington Central Salish Sea as they have for thousands of years. Here the Suquamish live and protect the land and waters of their ancestors for future generations as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of 1855. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Morrowaki?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Quitzland. I move to approve tonight's City Council Study Session Agenda as presented.
Seconded by Councilmember Fantrey Johnson.
Are there any conflicts of interest to disclose? Oh, yes, we'll vote. Yes, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So ordered. Are there any conflicts of interest? Okay. We have a fairly simple agenda with one item, the third item, that will call for some discussion. And we'll proceed to that. City Manager, would you like to introduce the first item receiving a presentation on the 30% design for the Kitsap Transit Park?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We have some guests with us today from Kitsap Transit. They will present the work that they're doing on a park and ride lot at Day Road. There is a motion for the council to consider at a future point in time. We, the city, will be asked to vacate and also dedicate right away in support of this park and ride lot. I'd like to go ahead and introduce Stephanie Lilly from Kitsap Transit, and she can introduce the other people that are with her.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen at the council. My name is Stephanie Lilly. I'm the Service and Capital Development Director with Kitsap Transit. So, we have been a part of the 305 working group for quite some time. And this project is one of the projects that came out of that very large work effort. This is a park and ride that is hopefully going to collect people before they get all the way down here to Winslow to catch the ferries, to kind of help with the downtown traffic problem you have down here. The current site of Day Road is a makeshift park and ride. It's a part of DOT excuse me, right of way that the people have turned into a park and ride of their own. And so we would like to formalize it, make it safer, and really just do it justice for what it is. I'd like to introduce you to Kevin House, our engineer on this project. He's going to go over what the current project is looking like and the pieces of property that we're going to ask you to look at to vacate and dedicate. And then we're here to answer any questions that you may have. So, Kevin?
Thank you, Stephanie. Little ones forward, okay. Make sure I got the right buttons. Alright, so what I did is I put together just a little slideshow showing some of the plans that we put together and submitted to the city for review of the park and ride. Excuse me, it's a little slow. There we go. Okay, so let me orient you to this. So, to the right is Pauls Bow and to the left is to the ferry. 305 is in the middle. North is kind of down and to the right, and the big box to your right is about where the fire department is at Phelps Road. Day Road, you can see it running diagonally through there, and that is heading towards the water on the west side of the island. About where the north arrow sits is where the substation is for Puget Sound Energy. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of orientation there. So, this is just the 30%, so real early design of the layout. Part of the issues with the current intersection configuration is how Phelps Road comes in now. It's maybe hard to describe because I didn't include it on here, but the dashed, is the top and laser? Yes, it is, okay. So if you can point up here. Sorry, back one. Can you put your cursor up there? Is that possible? Just a point, so they can yeah. So this okay. So the sweeping portion of that with the dashed lines is where the existing Phelps Road is. And we are realigning the intersections to get that conflict that's there now. So if you are coming from downtown and you're going to get off at Day Road and get onto Phelps, you have to kind of sit in the, in the turn pocket and wait for a vehicle to let you through to get across. So the intent here is to, for those folks, is to only have Phelps Road, if you're going to go down Phelps Road, you're not going to get off at Day Road. You're going to go past Day Road and at the wish you guys could see this, but at the extension where Phelps Road hits 305 is where people turn right. Here, I can help you a little bit now. So you see right where my arrow is now? So this is where you would take that right turn to go down Phelps Road if that's where you were headed instead of from the intersection where you used to do it, here. So you would go past Day Road and you would make a right turn. And then if you're coming from Phelps Road and you're going to head towards town, you would still do a similar route as you would have done before down this, we call the Day Road Collector, and this would be a one-way that would take you to the Day Road, and you would only turn right here. So the intent of this is, and then if you're going to go towards Pauls Bow, you wouldn't have to go to the intersection. You would come up Phelps Road and you would have a right turn and then a taper to get back onto 305. So the big key is to remove a lot of the conflicts of vehicles at the intersection itself and also prepare for the future roundabout that is going to be coming with the 305 project. And I'll show you a slide here in a moment. So this, this one here is kind of the right-of-way exhibit of ownership, so the yellow is what Kitsap Transit needs for the park and ride. The red dashed portion is existing right-of-way. This area here is where existing Phelps Road is now, is this area. And so that would be the area that would need to be vacated by the city in order to convey it to Kitsap Transit for the park and ride. The yellow in this little area here is where Kitsap Transit is going to purchase that from DOT because that piece of property is still owned by DOT, and that's where the gravel lot is now that people use for the park and ride. And then they would dedicate this green square to the city for the right-of-way. And then the green on this side would be, they would purchase it from the family that owns this property here. And the red and green dashed here would be future right-of-way needed for the roundabout on 305 that Wash Dot and the 305 Working Group, including the city, is putting in. So a little bit about the schedule, and then I'll show you with the roundabout and everything together as one big project. So we're currently working on both design and environmental at the same time. We are just getting started on permitting for the project. And then shortly we'll be getting into more right-of-way once we confirm design with, with the city that everything we have is in the right locations and construction. Grant funding has to be spent by June of 2027. So we would start approximately a year ahead of that in construction, so that's our timeline for that. This is the project with the roundabout. And so you can see how they fit together even though they're going to be built currently at separate times. And the hatched areas are landscape areas. So the old road would be, portions of the old road would be removed, and the new Phelps would go tee into 305 as it, as it shows here, but it would only be a right in and right out. So there'd be no left turn out of Phelps at 305. You would go to the roundabout and go through the roundabout to make that work.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Yes.
Is the roundabout happening? Because we were told, we didn't know, so this would be news for us. Good news, but
The roundabout is in design.
Oh, wow, okay.
The funding is the hard part.
Yeah, they're actually doing it.
Yeah, so as Joe knows, because he's on that working group sessions, it is short money currently, and we will know better as we move ahead to see how far short it is.
Okay.
And I know the working group is trying to get together to find other funding opportunities.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, hi, I want to ask a question real quick. This is much easier with a roundabout, right? To make this left-hand turn off of Phelps. Right? Because you can't come out through the Day Road Connector because it's a one-way, right?
It is one-way towards the roundabout.
Right, so before the roundabout is built, when you're coming off of Phelps and you want to go toward the city, come toward us, you have to go straight out Phelps. You can't go through this Day Road Connector, is what I'm saying.
You do, you do, you still use the Day Road Connector.
But it's a right turn only.
It yes, so
So can you go back to the other one without the roundabout?
You're saying left turn onto Day Road itself and head
No, I'm trying to get on 305 and come into the city.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll drive
Coming out Phelps, then I just get on 305 right there. Is that right? Because I can't
If you can see my cursor, can you see the cursor there? Okay, so driving along here, if I go straight, the only thing I can do is go right towards Pauls Bow.
Okay.
So you turn left here.
Okay.
And you go down Day Road Connector.
Then I can only go right here.
And then you stop here and you go right.
Okay.
And then you're at the signal just like it is today.
Then the other issue then?
Yep.
What if you want to go left down Day Road?
In my error there, you can turn left here. What we did block was this cross, so you can't we put a curb over here to, to make sure that the cars that are doing this movement today know they can't go straight across because it's going to be opposite graphic.
Right.
Sorry, I confused you.
No, 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 I know. That's, that's the little waiting spot over there is going to be gone.
Yes, yeah.
I get that.
Those turning will be able to turn and go right up Day Road to the east.
So you showed me how to get on 305 to come to the city, but what if I want to now just go left on Day Road? How am I going to do that from Phelps? Because I can only go right.
You would still come down, and, and my mistake, you can turn left in this scenario. With the roundabout, you cannot turn left.
Oh, okay.
With the roundabout.
Very good. I'm okay now.
Projects ahead, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't know if you want to proceed further or stop for questions now?
I'm ready for questions.
Councilmember Dietz, you have your light on.
Well, I, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Good to see you, Kevin. Good to see you. This is like part of the 305 Working Group. When are we meeting again? But no, I, this looks like a very well-thought-out design because I, I live not too far from here, and so I do use that connection. And it can be quite difficult with the folks from Phelps trying to get onto Day Road and then 305. So this looks like that addresses it very well. And of course, the, the whole idea of having the park and ride to get people to use it. And hopefully the intention is more people will use it once this is built. So, and then that will have, of course, a positive impact on traffic. So very, very good. Totally. I was going to make a motion for this, so I, I just, I think Councilmember Fantrey Johnson kind of brought up the points that I was going to bring. I, I think this is very well thought out, good design. Yes, we don't have funding for the roundabout. We have funding for the, for the construction, but we have funding for the design part. That's about, that's sort of the last gasp of the funding that we currently have. And I don't know, we'll see what the next session brings us. But we wanted to be as, I guess, say, as a group, working group, we wanted to be as prepared to do the construction project as possible, so that's why we went ahead with the design.
Councilmember Morrowaki now?
Thank you, yeah. And all the council members, remember, I've been reporting this out now for several years. And it's really exciting. Good to see you, Jennifer. Didn't see you this day because we canceled our meeting this morning. And the one thing that is being left out is that the roundabout would not be possible without this project because this project will be doing a stormwater sump, which would capture the stormwater from the Day Road project, which was the stumbling block that did not allow this to move forward in the past because the properties nearby would either unwilling or not able to allow space for that stormwater capture. So without this Day Road park and ride, the roundabout would not happen. So that's an important part of this process, and it's pretty exciting, I think, to do that. If I can move that? Or any other discussion?
If you want to make the motion.
A question, if I may. Where, how are buses negotiating the business and parking, I would suppose, on a schedule? What we have from from the north end coming to this would, would come in and then go forward on a, on a, on a route usually?
Okay, so the bus will not enter the park and ride except for the accessible bus. So it would be the smaller bus.
Oh.
The pretty much where the current sign is now, there's no shelter, there's nothing else. So about where the cursor is right here.
Oh.
This is where the bus stop is.
Oh, I see, okay, that makes sense, actually.
And so that they'll use the roundabout or come through the signal, just as it is today. And the intent is you build this in the right location for the roundabout. And then when the roundabout comes in, you don't have to change that. It's in the right spot and, and change. So there's a these two projects are very intertwined. Obviously, they need to, to work together. And then the park, the the bus stop on the far side, heading towards the ferry, is here. So just a little in front of the old, the old one or current one is right in this location here where the cursor is. So just giving you an idea. And it's a, similar to most of the other roundabouts. It's a pull-in, pull-out. We most of those are on the far side, so it would have been on, over here after the roundabout. But because of the station itself, we don't want people to have to cross here and then cross again because you'll get people that will run. Not, not through the crosswalks. They will run across the street in order to get it. So we're looking for opportunity to make it a shorter route for users.
And Councilmember Schneider and then Mayor Matthews?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So you answered one of my questions, which is that somebody who's in the park and ride that wants to go into town needs to cross to get to the other side. And, you know, that looks like a decent, shorter, you know, distance for them to get across. I started counting and I lost track, but how many, how many parking spaces are in this new and improved?
It's right around 70.
70, okay.
There's five EV charger currently in the plan and four handicap.
And then you mentioned something about the, the bus being only an accessible bus, a smaller one.
The one that would go into the parking lot itself in order to either pick up or drop off handicap or, you know, somebody that needs accessibility or to be dropped off inside the parking lot. So that's all we're setting it up for, as a vehicle.
Oh, I, I think I see. So the, the big buses that are typically on that route are going to stay on their normal routes and schedules. But then how, how do you know, is it a on-demand kind of thing where you, where someone who's
Oh, let the expert
Bye, Stephanie.
Yeah, so it would be your BI ride. It would be your folks that have called for their access services, their paratransit services that are going there. So those are all pre-arranged rides. And so it would be something that they have asked for it to go to that location.
Got it. All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
So Mayor Matthews and then Councilmember Fantrey Johnson?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor, and thank you so much. I just had a quick question about coordination of the projects because I know that Wash Dot is moving forward with a roundabout at High School Road and 305. And just thinking about traffic and backups and all that sort of good stuff and wondering about when you, construction and how you're going to just work with them on timing to make sure that there's not a lot of huge backup was, came to mind. And then someone mentioned BI Ride, and I just saw those this weekend. They're like really cool, new, electric-looking vehicles. So if anyone hasn't seen those, definitely take a look. They're really cool. It was just a side, but yeah, definitely just concerned a little bit about coordination.
Yeah, when we get closer, usually if there are projects going on at a similar time, we will coordinate, or at least even in the project itself, it requires the contractor to coordinate with adjacent jobs and other things so that trucks aren't backed up in each other's areas, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Fantrey Johnson?
Yeah, that's pretty much my question too. You know, we just had two roundabouts built down 305. And one of the issues that we saw was with the businesses on Day Road not knowing exactly when the construction was starting and stopping. And somehow they would like to coordinate that with letting their workers off so that they don't get into that traffic, you know? And I think what, what we found out was that it would really help them a lot to know those times, so they could let people out an hour earlier or an hour later and try to schedule it so that people can get off the island. Is that some kind of coordination that you would be, Wash Dot would be willing to do for the businesses along Day Road?
Yes, because we are very much impacting their access in and out. And so there would be quite a bit of coordination between all those stakeholders, is what we would call them, including the fire department. And we've already had some conversations with, with the fire chief and in making sure that, you know, they're good with the width we have in areas for access. And similar to what we did on 305 at Eggitwood to allow a mountable section for them just to be able to cross over the median easily. They would have that at the end of Phelps. They would also have that same option at the end of the Day Road Connector so they can go where they need to as quickly as they need to.
Is there going to be like any kind of public meetings for the businesses and the residents to come and throw stones at you instead of us?
Trying to avoid this, but that's yeah, do we have?
So, again, Kitsap Transit is building just the park and ride. The state is doing the, the roundabout. So Kitsap Transit has done and will likely do another outreach as we get closer to the project. Hopefully, the park and ride will have less of a traffic impact than the roundabout. When the roundabout is getting closer to coming onboard and they're further along in their design, I'm not going to speak for the state, but usually they have some sort of a process to move forward. And the state is here today. I'm not, I'm not going to point her out and make her come up here, so. But yeah, so we will definitely do our best to coordinate. Once we get to that construction stage, we will be working with your city staff here, and they will help us identify any folks that are really impacted by our construction on the park and ride.
Okay, and thanks for the clarification because I put you right in the bag with them. Sorry.
Hey, you know, I, I've been part of the project. I'm really excited about the roundabout. I just don't get to build it, so we'll, we'll let somebody else take the, the joy of that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Morrowaki?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Amen. This is a good segue because Phelps Road will be adjusted. So this will have an impact, and we've already gone through this with other issues. So there will, there will be road closures. It looks like it's going to have to have some sort of adjustment because you're taking the whole road out that curves down and will be phased so that the Day Road Connector is built to the point of the road and then closing off that part. I mean, I can see how that would work. So am I following the kind of thought process you have there?
Yes, we haven't obviously figured it out quite yet because we want to make sure this is what we're designing. But yes, we will, we will plan staging, traffic, figure out how many vehicles to expect. You know, if there's an opportunity for us to get something done quicker, determine if we could ask for a detour for a short period of time in order to get something done quick so that it doesn't disrupt over a longer period of time. We can get it done in a weekend or get it done in the evening or, or something in order to make it less intrusive on the traveling public.
Thank you. And one thing that, if you look at it, all those little dotted areas, that's all new landscaping. This is going to really change the appearance and feel of that whole intersection and in front of the fire station too, making it much more accessible to the public as well. So it's, it's a great project. Move? May I?
Make a motion?
Yeah, I move to authorize the City Manager to bring forward at a future City Council meeting a right-of-way vacation and dedication in support of the Kitsap Transit Park and Ride at Day Road and State Route 305.
Moved by Councilmember Morrowaki and seconded by Councilmember Dietz. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you very much for a fine presentation, both of you. Thank you. Councilmember Hytopolis?
One, one follow-up request, that that not be on a consent agenda, that there's opportunity for public this is a study session?
Yes, good. Item 3B, consider the Dave Ruhl and Open Water Marina policy for live awards. City Manager, do you want to set this up?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. This item's been before the council several times, and we have worked through the council what the policy will be. We are down to the final segments of the policy. The council's indicated that they would like this to be 100% affordable opportunity for live awards, which we understand. Our policy reflects that. We also investigated and we concluded that this cannot be an official affordable housing site primarily because we do not establish a landlord or tenant relationship. We don't own the boat. The final question that is being presented for a policy consideration, Laura Shear will present this, is really the period of time in which we would want to advertise this or make this available for those 6% AMI versus market rate voters. And with that, Ms. Shear has a presentation for you.
Good evening, council. Laura Shear, Management Analyst for the city, here to talk to you today about the Davey Lynn Open Water
Open Water Marina policy. Next slide, please. Since the 2025 DNR rate increase, this will be the third time that the Davilin Open Water Marina will be brought to council for consideration, bringing it back again today. So there's time to implement a policy before the agreements for 2026 are signed. What's presented tonight is council's, or staff's research or recommendation prioritizing low-income livaboards. And to also help frame the discussion, we'll talk about a council question about whether buoys can count towards affordable housing. Also, quick mention, other policy objectives discussed at previous meetings include no displacement of livaboards in good standing and prioritization of livaboards with low income. Next slide, please. In short, city manager mentioned this, but buoys do not count towards affordable housing. The city leases water space from the DNR and then subleases the water space to the livaboards. And water space and buoys don't meet the current definition of the city, of a dwelling unit for both the city's definition and the revised code of Washington. Even if it did, water space and buoys wouldn't count towards new dwelling units towards House Bill 1220 because the Davilin Open Water Marina has been operating officially since 2012 and unofficially much longer than that. But that doesn't mean that the city can't prioritize low-income livaboards in the Davilin Open Water Marina. We have the ability to administer an administrative policy consistent with the city's current comprehensive plan, Housing Element Number 5.3. The only question that is remaining right now is whether to introduce a vacant buoy period of 90 days in between two different... To address that, that'll be Police Chief.
Good evening, Council. Chief Clark, Police Chief. Basically, our concerns with vacant buoys, there's 16 mooring buoys in the Open Water Marina there. They are, there's four each, various sizes, 30, 40, 50, and 60 feet. They're designed to most efficiently use that space and also place the vessel so that as they're swinging, you know, they don't have the ability to strike each other, interfere with navigation around the area. For us, vacant buoys invite unauthorized moorage. We've had boats tied up to the buoys. In one instance, I'm told the person went on vacation and left their boat behind. We run the risk of a boat being oversized for that particular ball. Safety concerns related to the condition of vessels that are there, we inspect all vessels that are moored there. And of course, you know, someone just outright abandoning a vessel that we then have to take steps to dispose of that. You know, for our preference, if the buoys are occupied, it's a much better condition.
Next slide, please. So given the guidance thus far, staff has prepared two different versions of the administrative policy. They're the same in every way except for one difference, but both have all buoys, all 16, be prioritized as affordable. When a buoy becomes vacant, then the low-income waitlist would be exhausted first before moving to the standard waitlist. This policy then introduces two separate waitlists, low income set at or below 60% and another for above. And this would also administer the approved motion in July 8th for setting those two separate rates. And next slide, please. So with the two different versions in your packet, there are also two motion options, both to move to set policy guidance at the next business meeting. And option B is whether to introduce the 90-day vacant buoy waiting period before moving from the low-income waitlist to the standard waitlist. And for context, there are currently eight livaboards on the waitlist, four of which indicated that they would qualify as low income, two said that they would not, two, we don't have an answer. And of the current 16 livaboards, 13 indicated they would qualify as low income and three would not.
So I'll first recognize the Councilmember Deeds and then Councilmember Marawaki. And then Councilmember Fantroy Johnson.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Chief. Yeah, so it seems like the decision point for us is the only difference is whether there's a 90-day period or not. And so the Chief Clark mentioned, well, there's some safety issues and functional issues having an unoccupied buoy. So that's what I was trying to weigh, you know, would be the best decision. And I did have a question whether there was waitlist, so you've answered that. Thank you. Have the buoy residents been, you know, surveyed as far as their views on this? You know, because it may be in their interest not to have unoccupied buoys as well? Or do they rather wish that there was a longer, that there was the 90-day period? So I guess my question is, have the current residents, if you will, have they been asked about this?
Specifically that question, no. They're happy to know that they're, since they're current, that they will be not displaced. So they're happy to have their own places.
Sure. Okay. Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Marawaki and then Councilmember Fantroy Johnson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Quitzlin. Following up on Councilmember Deeds, I liked the 90-day because it gives more time for others who might consider. Just a question, I don't know how we would do this. Is there a possibility to have dummy boats held there when there's a buoy that's not being used or being rented? It'd be one of our, just so no person like this person who went away on vacation could use it. And there's, I'm sure there's a lot of boats out there that are just not really usable, but it could be just something that would be like a holding spot and then removed when that buoy becomes available or rented.
You know, I think the issue of us having a boat that we could put out on that mooring ball is where do we put it when it's not needed for that purpose? And, you know, there are lots of boats out there, but they have to be maintained. You know, we potentially run the risk of, you know, maybe something sinking and now city's got a liability to remove that.
Would it, sorry, thank you. We have so many active mariners out there. I would suspect that if we just made a call and say, could we, if you wouldn't mind holding your boat there for a while while we open it up, could we do that?
I believe, too, that you would want to look at, it's temporary, but it would still, there is, this is an asset that we charge a fee for, and the work assumptions that we would have, we'd want to charge a fee even if someone was just holding the space.
Yeah.
But that is an issue we're not contemplating, and we haven't calculated the degree of difficulty in going through that exercise.
Just trying to think out of the boat, I guess. Thank you.
Councilmember Fantroy Johnson?
Yeah, what I want to know is, it seems like, okay, if there's a safety issue with having no boats there, right, because people abandon it, it seems to me that 90 days is a long time to be vacant. And I understand, you know, that we want to give an opportunity for affordable boating, you know, to make sure that someone comes up and says, yes, I want to use it. But I'm thinking maybe 30 days might be a little more safer than 90 days. Yeah, to have it, you know, open for 90 days is just a long time. So that's what I would suggest.
Yeah. Councilmember Hightoplis?
Yeah, I'm kind of disappointed in the options that were provided. I don't really feel like these are two options. I feel like they're two versions of the same options with a 30. And, you know, I had certainly requested that we hold buoys open, and it seems that it's been decided that our choices are between 90 days or not at all. I just want to remind everybody that, and I can see where the votes are going to go, but I'm just going to put on the record, this was, the city manager described it as an asset that we charge a fee for, but it was an asset that we created on state land after a huge amount of effort purely for the purpose of creating a housing opportunity or allowing the continued housing, affordable housing opportunity that the livaboards had traditionally had in the marina, in the marina, in the harbor. I don't believe this community ever would have created or tried to, in order for the state to have allowed us to create this unique, you know, thing that we created if it was for wealthy people to moor their boats out there. It causes impact on the sound, it's a visual issue, it's a traffic issue, it's there because of that. And I don't think there's any reason that this city couldn't decide to leave buoys open. People can abandon boats anywhere in Puget Sound, at any dock, at any open slip. And so I can understand that in that if we were going to check every single box of exactly what the city would like to happen, we wouldn't have an open buoy. But that's not the purpose of the Open Water Marina. So I wouldn't be able to vote for either of these options.
To our deeds?
Sure, I guess it's my turn again. Well, just thinking about this, well, there is a difference between the two options. And I'm going to weigh in on the 90 days. And the reason is that because the uniqueness of this livaboard site, did I hear, like, this is like the only one in the state? So it's very unique. So it could be that someone who's in another location, who knows where, in the sound or even along the coast, finally hears, hey, there's an opening here on Bainbridge. And that's actually another question I did have, is how will this be advertised? I don't know, is there livaboard news, you know? But you know what I'm saying is because of the uniqueness of this site, again, maybe the only one in the state, and the circumstances that people may be in when they're living in a 25-foot sloop with not much else, that maybe the more option, you know, time we have, the better. Now, saying that now, then if it becomes an issue with safety and others, then we have to say we can revisit. I mean, ordinances can always be revisited. So for that purpose, I would be in favor of the item, motion B with the 90 days, making sure that everyone who falls under this, who can take advantage of this opportunity can learn about it and take advantage. I mean, if there was a lot of these livaboard opportunities, then I would think differently. But no, the very uniqueness, I think we need to be a little more open to folks who need it. Thank you.
Councilmember Schneider, then, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I think, I appreciate the fact that, you know, the original intent for these would be for low income. Obviously, we have some now being occupied by not necessarily low income, and we have a waiting list of not low income. I think my thought is that 60% and below is fine to create a priority for, but what if we had that second list of 100% and below, noting that 100% is a Kitsap definition, which means something very different when you're trying to stay local on Bainbridge. And so then we just basically wouldn't have a waiting list for not qualified, not income qualified folks. And in that case, I think it would be best to either have a 30-day or none, because at that point, you know, folks who were interested in applying for it would, should know about it. I think that, anyway, I'll stop there. But I think that there's, the intent is maintained by 100% and below, and I'd hate to see the spot staying open for a long time. Thank you.
Mayor Matthews, next.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I think I agree with the comments that I'm hearing and where this direction is going. I don't really have a preference. I think 30 days is enough time. It sort of hits the balance. It's not too long of 90 days. I'd really love it if we knew what the residents preferred, if they had a preference, to go with that, but in the meantime, I think we'll land on 30 or lower.
We've covered a lot of ground. I have, I hope maybe both of you can speak to some questions that I have. It's my impression, Laura, that you have been a real problem solver. And I wonder what you've learned or what you perceive from that. But I also have the sense that the chief's people are called upon to pay attention and deal with things. I don't know much about that. If you want to tell us anymore, what sorts of things. And I guess the thing that's most important to me is a sense of how stable the population is, how long is a typical residence? Or what's the variation between short-term and very long-term? Because this is a rare thing and an important thing for the island. I, the more we can do to make it function to everyone's benefit, the better. And I do like, some of the suggestions that have been made that vary a little bit from the existing, the presented draft. Just, each of you, if you would, just give a little bit of observational information.
Maybe we could, yeah, observational information is, I heard a couple of questions. How stable is the community?
Yes.
And we could provide that. And then the second piece was, what are any further issues with an empty buoy or area? And then I just want to, I just wanted to make a comment about what the council's considering.
In terms of stability, a lot of the livaboards have been there for many years, and we see turnover of maybe one to maybe two vessels or buoys a year. And we have a pretty high rate of them being occupied. It's pretty rare that one would be left vacant.
Yeah, I would agree with that. You know, our marine officer is familiar with all of the residents out there as well.
Do you have one person in particular or two with experience there?
We have, yes, we have one full-time marine lead officer that he's generally always on the boat when it goes out. So he is most familiar with the community members.
Yeah, I've had a chance to meet him and talk with him. That's been, that's been nice to know. Thank you. Councilmember Marawaki, are you next or?
Yeah. Yeah. A question just, I had a question. So what is the mix right now of low income and non-low income market rate, I guess? How is that distributed among the buoys today?
Today, 13 say that they would qualify as low income and three would not. And that's based on the 60% AMI.
Can I make the motion before you?
Yes, Councilmember Fantroy Johnson.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion. I'm going to alter it a bit. I move to set policy guidance at the September 23, 2025 regular city council business meeting for the Davilin Open Water Marina that establishes priority considerations for applications at or below 60% of area medium income, with spaces offered on and as available basis to higher-income applicants after all income-qualified applicants are considered and the 30-day wait period is observed.
Is there a second for that? Second by the mayor? Any discussion? Councilmember Hightoplis?
I don't understand why we're narrowing this down at a city council, sorry, at a study session. Why are we not, we're avoiding public comment on an issue that has mattered to some people in this community for many, many years. I don't understand why we're doing this. I can understand us talking about it, studying it, but why are we working on narrowing it down? And then I will repeat my request from the last item that I certainly would not want to see this on the consent agenda.
City manager?
Yeah, so let me clarify a couple of things. One is, we're looking for some policy direction. The idea that a vacant space would be held vacant perpetuity is not off the table. It never was. What I ask is those people that work most closely with this, with their recommendation, those people that work daily... Those people that work daily with the tenants and daily managing the marina have indicated that there would be safety concerns if there were an extended period of vacancy for the buoy. That information was provided to you. You can do whatever you like with that information. This is a study session to talk about it. So we can talk about it frankly. No final decision is being made. And with regard to a city council meeting, consent items are equal to non-consent items. But I understand the point is that you want the opportunity to deliberate it further. So that isn't being cut off, but this is at a study session. Any council member can try to persuade their colleagues for this. So it ranges from what was proposed to leaving the spaces into perpetuity until a qualified individual. That is on the table.
Councilor Dietz and then Councilor Morawaki.
Sure. So, so the motion's been made for, said, uh, there is a time period instead of 90 days, it's 30. I, I personally would like the 90 days, so I'm not going to vote in favor of this.
Councilor Morawaki?
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor Whitson. And, uh, Councilmember Tomlin has an excellent point. I mean, I would, if the motion was voted today, I would vote no, because I'd want it on a regular business meeting where the public would have an opportunity to at least discuss it. But this has been presented to us tonight in a study session. And of course, we can in study sessions to, uh, make decisions. But typically, study session is to discuss an issue and then move it forward to a regular business meeting of which then there would be the opportunity for the public to weigh in. And so moving it tonight, I would vote no.
Councilmember Fentre Johnson and then Councilmember Hightoplis?
No.
No, Councilor Hightoplis first.
Yeah, for the longer term issue, I'm sorry, but I do not believe the issues that on the consent agenda bear the same weight as items that are on the main agenda. They do not encourage comment. They do not encourage deliberation. We have to pull them off to deliberate. The message to the community is that we've already decided and we're just formally voting. Um, and they are not highlighted on the agenda. So I think it's very important that if something requires further discussion, it's on the main agenda. And I want to say that my concern about this is the same as it was when we were deliberating, but then actually winnowing down from, I think, four or five options on that artwork over there. Um, we're, we're, we're verging on actually making a decision at study sessions. We can certainly verbally do that. We can do whatever we want in some sense, but it, it's not good public process for us to be making motions that are, appear to be eliminating options.
Uh, as to the matter of this consent agenda, nothing's been decided as far as I can say. Uh, as to where, where on the agenda, you know, and this is something that we, uh, Mayor and I, uh, discussed with the city manager. So that's a, that's a, that's a significant point. We may be headed toward making no decision, uh, if the motion is defeated. Uh, and then what do we do next? Um, I'm, I'm kind of
Why don't we give a, give a, give a direction and then come?
I'd like to say something. I got my light on.
Yes, Councilor Fentre Johnson and then Mayor Matthews.
The motion that I made was to move this
Yes.
to another meeting.
Yes.
We have not decided anything at this meeting other than what we do at a study session. We talk about the issue and we move it to another meeting. Now, if, if the proposal that is moved to another meeting is not agreed on at that meeting, then it, it will fail. I mean, we're not deciding anything here. I, you know, and thank you for in the beginning of your presentation saying that we have seen this item three times before. There was a chance for public comment during that. So we're not stifling anything. It, you know, this is the type of misinformation that gets out there that says, oh, we're making all our decisions without public comment. That is not true. There's an opportunity for public comment when we bring this to another meeting. That's the whole purpose for it. We haven't decided. We decided to move it to another meeting. We talked about it and now we're moving it.
As a further comment, Councilor Hightoplis and then the mayor, I, yeah.
Um, I just wanted to calm everyone a little bit. Um, as my mom used to say, fix your face. No, because I don't think we see what we look like sometimes to the public or what they see. And so they might look down and I don't think you do it on purpose, but you're like rolling your eyes and shaking your head and stuff. So I, no, but I mean, so I think we should just, point of order. Yeah, so we should just try to speak to each other.
And I am going to respond, if I may, Deputy?
You are recognized. Thank you.
We do not need to sink to levels of commenting on people's expressions or characterizing their comments as misinformation. This is my third time on this body. I know what good public process looks like. I know what we've done over the years. I'm making legitimate comments about changes to public process. Let's keep, let's keep our, our conversation about the process and not the people. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Morawaki and then perhaps we'll ask a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just I have one small comment. He goes first.
Hey, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And, um, I, I do agree with Councilmember Hightoplis, the kind of, um, discussion of a person's actions or their intent is, is not necessary. And it's, it's really inappropriate to have that said from one council member to another. Um, but Councilmember Fralor Johnson is right. I mean, the motion does say move it forward to the meeting. Um, and I was reading that, no, we're trying to do this decision tonight. So that's what I was hearing and that's what I was opposed to.
Yeah.
So, um, we will have it at the next meeting.
I think 23rd.
And I would support Councilmember Hightoplis's, uh, suggestion, I think a request, that this be a, um, business item and not a consention item.
Yes, yes.
I think that's only fair.
Yeah. Um, Councilor Dietz and then Councilor
Thank you. Just very briefly, is, is, there's nothing here that says consent agenda or anything. So let, let's just agree that it will not be on the consent agenda. It will be a regular business item. We'll have a full discussion and hopefully, uh, about the moving forward.
Councilor Schneider?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would like to, um, I would like to agree that that we are forwarding this to the next meeting. My sense is that we are, um, pulling back on our ability to create a, a movement forward i- if we're not allowed to make motions at, um, a study session. I do believe in making motions at a study session. I don't believe in setting permanent guy, you know, permanency at a study session. But it does force us to come up with our, um, it, it gives direction to the city manager. It's not final direction. Um, and so maybe we just need to create, um, a little bit of a finer distinction on what we say. I mean, it's, it's not bad here. It says, I move to set policy guidance, um, which is not quite the same as, you know, saying bring us back an ordinance. Um, but maybe it's meaning the same thing. I don't know. So I would like to see us have, um, a structured way to move forward in study sessions. Um, so I will vote to support this. It doesn't mean I won't change my mind next time and, um, we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Are you ready for the question? I can repeat the mo- motion if needed. No? We, we know what we're voting on, the 30-day wait period. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
So that is of, yes. How many? Four? It was, it was four in favor and three, three against.
Deputy Mayor, this could be brought back to the council in terms of the context. I think that's really good for staff to hear this. This could be brought back to the council in the context of council direction request. Uh, there is, will be no recommendation. You know what the issue is. It's, uh, what to do is if there is not someone who is, uh, within the target population that is immediately available. That's the issue. Uh, that's, and we can bring this back in terms of council direction requested and the council can deliberate and provide, uh, the direction. And the range is as presented here or until as long as it takes.
Our third item is an update on the directives provided by the city council on December 3rd of last year related to policies for the Winslow SubArea and the comprehensive plan update.
So again, I'm sorry, I forgot, but that's the labor of the point. But we, the, the item here related to, uh, the waitlist for the marina will be brought back
Yes.
without a recommendation, council direction requested.
Right.
Uh, the next item we have for you is, uh, a report back uh, from, uh, a meeting of December the 3rd where we want to take the opportunity to let the council know, uh, what activities or what response has been to a meeting you had December 3rd, 2024, where you discussed various elements of the uh, comprehensive plan, Winslow SubArea Plan. Prior to December the 3rd meeting, the council had asked for the opportunity to express your opinion on the SubArea Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, the council was invited to submit questions. Those questions were received by staff and assembled into a, a matrix chart. And then it was distilled down to approximately 10 questions. Uh, Planning Director Patty Charnas will review those questions with you and then also review what the status is at this point in, uh, September of 2025 now, in terms of the progress made in responding to those questions.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Good evening, City Council. Patty Charnas, Planning and Community Development. It's a pleasure to be here. Um, as City Manager described, this is a different kind of monthly update on our long-range planning projects for Winslow SubArea Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. Um, at the conclusion of the draft environmental impact statement, which analyzed two growth alternatives, staff had put together, um, a comments matrix organizing over 1,000 comments and also looking at those council members that supplied some, uh, comments because you all are the, the, the policy group and legislative body. So we posed, city staff at the time posed 10 policy questions to city council for the purposes of getting some guidance, guide, guardrails on, um, to the staff and the planning commission before they embarked on developing a preferred alternative. Um, we've been asked to return to those policy questions to see, um, what's been done. And the good news is there's progress to report. Oh, I've got, I've got control. Oh, there we go. You've got control. Great. So again, tonight we'll review those policy questions. And importantly, there are no motions in this presentation. And equally as important, it's important to share with you some, um, activities of the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council on countywide growth centers. And we'll wrap up with some good news on how, um, Planning Consultant Joe Tovar is really helping the Planning Commission move, um, forward and make progress, which is great. Next slide, please. So again, in December 3rd, the city council study session had 10 policy questions and each had motions or considered or made for them. And, um, we've organized those into a matrix, as City Manager mentioned, recounting exactly what the policy question was, what, if any, uh, motion the city council made on that policy question and what has happened to date. Next slide, please. So the first policy question was regarding, should residential growth be allocated to only the Winslow Town Center and not outside of the town center, namely to the next area, which would be designated neighborhood centers? This is in keeping with our long-term growth strategy, to which our existing comprehensive plan, um, has stated that if we have to grow, let's try to put it in Winslow where the urban levels of services exist. At the time, city council motion was asking the Planning Correction, uh, Commission to exercise the discretion to explore whether or not, um, outside of the, uh, Winslow Town Center should be considered, but to give consideration to things like infrastructure, urban levels of service and, um, the pragmatism of locating a lot of people away from essential services. So the Planning Commission has not done any work except for Winslow. And you'll see that's being illustrated throughout the answers, um, as we go down the, uh, the progress of these. Once they complete, um, their work in Winslow, that's when they'll contemplate outside of Winslow, namely the neighborhood centers if necessary. Should, the second, uh, policy question is, should the city encourage private developers to build some of the affordable, uh, housing required by House Bill 1220, which amended our, our, um, mandates under the Growth Management Act using mixed income development? Council didn't make a specific motion at the time, but the good news is this and the following question, the Planning Commission has actually made, um, substantial measurable progress on one. Beginning in May of this year, they established, um, uh, an incentive base to incent affordable housing by creating more floor area ratio, which is a compression of density and also addressing building height to incent not just affordable housing, but also tuck-under parking in the high school and ferry road. Next slide, please. And similarly, um, the question asking, should a mandatory inclusionary housing zoning program be in all of Winslow or in limited areas was the policy question. The motion was asking the Planning, uh, Commission to look at that. And, um, the Planning Commission has, again, established a greater floor area ratio for affordable housing. Um, and so that's, those two questions have been acted on by the Planning Commission. The fourth policy question talked about building height. Building height is a, is an expression of density as well because it allows for more floors and then more units in those floors. So the policy question was asking, should the maximum billing heights be increased to 45 feet for the less intense or residential zones in Winslow and 65 feet in the more intense one, namely High School Road, Ferry and the core districts? And the city council motion at the time said that the Planning Commission should exercise their discretion on looking at these items and, um, height increases should consider, um, uh, the character of Winslow Way, uh, Madison and other neighborhoods. But again, the good news is, is earlier this month, the Planning Commission addressed building heights that, uh, incentivize affordable housing and/or tuck-under parking for the ferry and high school roads. So they'll, they'll continue to work on this because now they have, and I'll tell, talk a little bit about this more later. Um, uh, formed some subcommittees of three members each of Planning Commission. And so they're looking at incentives, which is, which is important and great. The fifth policy question posed to council was, should the Winslow SubArea boundary shift to the north and to the west to align more perfectly with the sewer service area? And the following question, uh, which is the next slide, but that's okay, um, is what about Wing Point? Wing Point being a single-family residentially, uh, built-out area? Should that be omitted from the new SubArea boundary? This was one of the first things the Planning Commission worked on in February. They actually established a working outer boundary that include, that went up north to align itself with the sewer service area. And interestingly, their working outer boundary recommendation includes Wing Point. So that was not omitted. Um, and interesting, also, they extended it to Yakina Avenue, which is just to the north of that Wing Point area. And that's actually outside of the sewer, of the sewer service area. So that is solid, um, uh, progress on that policy question. Next slide, please. The seventh policy question had to do with the Day Road Business and Industrial Center because that's the, one of the key areas where we could expand, uh, can economic development. Um, our other business and industrial centers are slightly built out. And so council didn't really act on this, uh, and, or give a motion. And the Planning Commission has not yet discussed anything outside of Winslow specifically in terms of their motions. They're still working on Winslow and it's, it's good work. The eighth policy, uh, policy question, should density be increased in the conservation area? And remember, this is an important consideration because if we add density in the conservation area, what should it look like? Should it be, um, affordable only? And the council asked the Planning Commission to look at this, however, to consider that, yeah, the conservation area was established because of what it has, the large intact forests, open spaces and would additional housing and density, um, be really appropriate in there? So the Planning Commission will be looking at the conservation area and the neighborhood centers once they complete their work on Winslow. Next slide, please. The second to last policy question The second to last policy question was, should the city allow more than one accessory dwelling unit or ADU on all parcels, including the conservation area, Winslow area, uh, Winslow Town Center and neighborhood centers? And the City Council asked the Planning Commission to look at that. Um, and while uh, deliberating on the accessory dwelling unit amendments that we needed to pass so that we could use the pre-approved building plans for accessory dwelling units, the Planning Commission absolutely thought about this. They talked about it and then deferred action on whether or not two ADUs should be allowed until when they get to um, more uh, specific time and focus on the conservation area and the concept of ADUs, more than one ADU. So I believe that's forthcoming. And then finally, the last policy question was regarding whether or not an area within Winslow should be designated a countywide growth center. As you may know, that's a candidate um, countywide growth center in keeping with the work that we do as a jurisdiction of the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. And um, there was no consensus or motion that council took. And again, the Planning Commission has not discussed this topic, but I'd like to uh, inform you of some recent work at the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. Next slide, please. Um, here in KRCC, they love acronyms and, you know, I'm going to try to spell them out so that I don't overdo it, no, the previous one. Thank you. So when they developed their twenty twenty five work plan, it was under the assumption that all jurisdictions, the cities and the county would have completed their periodic update of the comprehensive plan. Most by now have. And so the next item to work on would be the designation of centers. For instance, there is a regional growth center in Silverdale. There's a thing called a Metropolitan Growth Center in Bremerton. Polesbo and um, the city Bainbridge Island have a thing called a countywide growth center, which is different than those other growth centers. And growth centers um, really have what are called um, activity units, which are a concentration of people, jobs and services, especially transit, that help address all three of those more efficiently. Let's see what um, the Land Use Technical Advisory Committee is doing regarding the center's designation. Next slide, please. This is a snippet of that work plan on what it's going to be doing and how it's going to do and how it's going to complete this uh, growth center designation by the end of the year, which will be a, an amendment of the countywide planning policies. Countywide planning policies are required by the Growth Management Act. And um, we're envisioned to ensure that counties and cities work together on shared regional issues. Next slide. So as recently as the end of August, we received a, an email from staff of the Land Use Technical Advisory Committee saying, hey, um, by September fourth, let us know if you're going to submit what's called a technical memo and for your information in your packet is a blank version of that technical memo. It's just a lot of blanks to fill in regarding your countywide growth center. And, or let us know that you cannot provide that technical memo by September fourth, but intend to submit a technical memo by the October third due date. This is a published work plan. Or three, let us know that you do not intend to submit technical memos. At that time, because we're in the middle of Winslow Sub Area and not even really addressing our comprehensive plan yet, um, we, we said we are opting number three. But let's look at what this really is all about. Next slide, please. So this was the um, the work program that was mapped out earlier this year with those September fourth dates and how it was going to make its way from the Land Use Technical Advisory Committee to a policy um, group, then to the board. Next slide, please. That work plan has been updated and now at the last Land Use Technical Advisory Committee, which all the planning departments participate and have representation, I'm sending our senior planners there because A, they have the technical um, knowledge and expertise. Um, and so from the Land Use Technical Advisory Committee, they're going to review these designation memos, these packets. Port Orchard submitted four. Um, and it's because they have these areas that meet these, these activity units. Um, and that the, uh, the recommendations from the Land Use Technical Advisory Committee are now going directly to the um, uh, the board. So they're not going through the other steps. Next slide, please. So for your information, we currently have in the, on the right side of this slide and the dotted lines in the mixed use town center, an area within Winslow that meets the criteria of a countywide growth center. It's got the people, it's got the residences, it's got the jobs and the transit. So there could be consideration to submit a placeholder using our existing zoning. On the right side, it, it shows you how the Planning Commission is beginning to address those zoning districts, changing a little bit of this and a little bit of that. Um, and so it still could be submitted while we work on um, uh, finalizing Winslow. Um, if it's, if it's important to submit something by October third. However, next slide, please. Um, we've begun working and filling out this technical memorandum, a blank of which I attached. Um, it has a lot of provisional language in it that refers to the Planning Commission's ongoing work. So um, thanks for this opportunity to give you an update on our countywide growth center process at the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. Next slide, please. So to wrap up, it's really good to let you know that, you know, the Planning Commission is working extra meetings every month, though. These, these volunteers are really stepping up and of course, this commits a lot of staff time and resources too. The Planning Commission is further um, using subcommittees to address the details that need to be worked out on how zoning, housing and development standards. So progress is being made to our preferred alternative, which is our, our end goal. And we are ready to do um, very, very um, efficient and effective updates to selected comprehensive plan elements. So thank you for your time to give you this update and uh, I look forward to hearing your discussion.
Thank you. Um, that really sets the table for wherever the council wants to go. Uh, Councilmember Dietz says first and uh, or others, I suppose.
Great, thank you.
And then Councilmember Hytopolis.
Great. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and, and good to see you, Patty, for this. Um, so when I was on the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council last year, we, we, we talked about countywide planning policies, but nothing if I recall, was actually decided, but it seems like this is uh, moving through the process and it appears that I, that a decision will be made by the board in December. Uh, what is not clear to me in a very fundamental way is what are the pros and cons of having this designation? So just asking that, uh, because it wasn't clear to me um, when I was on the KRCC last year. So I, I'm going to look at, we have two colleagues who serve on the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. If they could advise the rest of us on this issue, on countywide planning policies, why we should do it or why we should not do it.
I'd like to suggest that we hear from anyone who wants to speak, uh, to focus on what we should be discussing among, in, in our, in this meeting. So um, Councilmember Hytopolis first and then I think uh, Councilmember Schneider.
Well, we've already discussed this before as a body and we've already signed on to the countywide planning policies, which include a direction to do this at some point. We had extensive conversation of that on previous council. And we, we did, we, the majority probably wouldn't be the current majority, probably wouldn't be the majority of this council. That's why at some point we do have to talk about this, felt that we weren't aware, or some people weren't aware at least, when they signed on to the countywide planning policies, what those implications were. And we went so far as to ask the City Manager to send a letter to KRCC asking whether we would in fact be forced to designate a center or whether we could, for example, designate one of our existing centers, whether it's Winslow or whatever, as a center. And we had sort of a weird terse back and forth with KRCC. So that's the last time we substantively discussed this a few years ago. Um, I have made it very clear every time we've discussed this, that I think that we should resist uh, designating a countywide center until we are absolutely forced to do so because becoming that, that classification within the framework of, of um, PSRC potentially opens us up to further direct regulation and overriding of local planning. When we can accomplish the same things that the centers accomplish without becoming, without designating the, the right, you know, defining the right units in the right area and saying, yes, KRCC and PSRC, we want to be a countywide growth center. And anything that that entails now or entails in the future. So my, my position has been and will continue to be that I have no interest in intentionally putting us into frameworks that we have no control over once we do that.
I, I hear that. I think we should discuss it further. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I was actually going to move on to some of the other um, points, but I guess I'll wait in a little bit on this one. Um, I guess I would agree with Councilmember Dietz that it would be really great to have a list of pros and cons. Um, and to the best of anyone's ability, trying to look into um, you know, I into the future and say, what might we need to? What might we be sort of forced into? I think um, in a discussion with the City Manager, um, we have a voice at the table. Um, you know, we have a voice at KRCC and um, and I think if our arguments make sense for the, the colleagues at that table, you know, it would be, I don't know, pretty to sort of twist Bainbridge's arm on something. Um, but that being said, we should take a hard look at what might be possible. What are the kinds of things we might want to resist? Um, I'll leave it at that until we move on to some of the, these others.
Are there others who, others who wish to speak? I have something to say. Um, just with reference to the countywide growth center. I don't, I've never heard anything about what, what will be imposed upon us as a consequence. I think rather it's a question of um, getting some advantage from that designation in connection with transportation planning and possibly other planning as well. Um, other, you know, planning for both uh, commercial and, and uh, residential development within the boundary of the center. Um, I think that the direction we followed, the, the direction that the Planning Commission has taken, uh, already establishes the level of um, activity. There are activity units, I think is the phrase. Uh, those activity units will be in the record. I do think that the council, the, the proper way, in, in my view, the proper way to go about this is for the council to direct the Planning Commission in the course of their completing work on the Sub Area Plan and the Comprehensive Plan to place this plan, place, place this intention in our uh, land use planning and, and our plan for Winslow. Um, so that we don't, we don't belong on the schedule in the next few months, I believe, but we should be heading in that direction intentionally. Uh, and along the way, we will learn more from give and take with people at PSRC, people at the county level. Uh, as to, you know, how these county, how these growth centers are meant to function. They function very differently in Kitsap County compared to King County. And a lot of what I hear in, in Puget Sound Regional Council is based upon the, the realities of King County. Uh, but I did ask, ask a question about the countywide uh, designation in the, in the most recent PSRC uh, Growth Management Policy Meeting. Uh, and uh, Mayor Matthews may want to add to this.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Um, I just have the question, what's in it for us? That's basically my, just, I just don't know. And then I would have a couple of questions with their email back to say, you know, what if we don't have it by this day or what, what does it mean if we're going to wait till the next time? Just real questions of what? I don't know what the is, is or isn't. So just, it's hard to make a decision.
I think, if I may, the, the Planning Commission, working with Joe Tovar can uh, get, get their answers to that, that question. And uh, and uh, share with us. Uh, and I know planning staff have perspective on this and, and Planning Commission, working with planning staff, will, I think, form a, a very clear picture. Uh, and we should then, you know, kind of wait for that greater amount of information perhaps. Uh, Councilmember Milwaukee.
And thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I'm looking over the memo from the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council and the amount of data and analysis that they require is incredibly daunting. It's just a huge, huge list, folks, and um, how to pick one, uh? Please describe or attach how to propose countywide growth centers, location for compact mixed use development. Discussion should include minimum activity unit density of ten activity units per acre, whatever that is, or five activity units per acre. Candidate countywide growth center planning and zoning for minimum mix of uses, twenty percent residential and twenty percent employment, unless unique circumstances make these percentages not possible to achieve and capacity and planning for additional growth. And I just read you one of nine bullets. So I mean, I can understand why staff is going, how much time do we have to fill this thing out? And, and it's a lot of questions that we don't know, right in the middle of the Sub Area Planning Process.
Yeah.
I, I, even, even, so my point is, even if we were going to do this, I don't know how we would have the staff capacity to fill this out appropriately. And some of these questions, well, we don't have answers to.
Staff can tell us whether it's hard or not. Uh, I think, I think, you know, they've been working with, with this uh, agenda, uh, looking at it. And in our, uh, this past Thursday, the Steering Committee meeting that included uh, Councilmember Schneider and myself and one member of the uh, uh, Plan Commission. We heard a lot about this and uh, pointing, in my view, not forcing anything, but simply talking about an opportunity and something that is, that is doable. Uh, um, that's the way I view it. Uh, if there are reasons to, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll be doing this. Everything takes time, so there's plenty of time to expose this question to public comment and further discussion. Are there other things uh, in the uh, the briefing that people want to go further into? Uh, Councilmember Hytopolis, you have your light on and then Councilmember Schneider.
I'm going to make one more comment about the countywide centers because they're important. Just want to make sure I've said two things. One is, no matter what, and I would hope that planning commissioners would agree, our local planning, our long term planning, our near term planning, uh, for how our committee looks and behaves and works, et cetera, should not be driven by activity units to qualify for something. It should be driven by the vision of this community for what it wants to do and be. The second thing I want to say is, I mean, and I know I've actually written up on this before, so I'll go back and eventually, if we're going to talk about this again, find what I, the research I did before. But I mean, you know, just one of the most essential lines regarding what these centers are, countywide growth centers serve important roles as places for concentrating jobs, housing, shopping and recreational opportunities. And that means for the region, that's the region's vision. So when you're highlighting this, and there's a lot more specifics and you were starting to kind of get into it by the application side of it, that when you get into this and you say, we want any benefits that is, that come with this, we are also bringing, that we are also accepting that any demands on our zoning, there's specific zoning, specific development regulations. So we can all do the research and go and find, there's a lot about it, envisioned for twenty fifty, et cetera, and subsidiary documents. This is not some, this is not a casual thing. And the last thing I just wanted to say before, and I won't speak again, but I did want to ask the planning director if she could help us understand, and I'm not sure how much you know, but I think you alluded to it when you said, I was actually very going to ask, you know, why PlanPoll isn't meeting anymore? It's been canceled repeatedly. You mentioned this idea of, and maybe you were sort of alluding to something different about LUTAC doing things that are just going directly on. And it sounds like what you're talking about is that LUTAC's doing things and there's no stop at PlanPoll ever. So, and you may not know why. And I want to bring that forward. I mean, again, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not deeply involved in any of the of the regional stuff, but this is an entire PlanPoll is a body that's made up of elected leaders that meets, and that's where the electeds get to talk about. So LUTAC meets with, it's actually the staff members from the different planning departments. They produce, they produce stuff. There are less frequent meetings, usually a PlanPoll that gives the electeds a chance to sort of basically have a tighter study session, right? And then inform what goes up to KRCC. I find it very concerning that at least the last two PlanPoll meetings have been canceled, and I have no idea why. I think we've gone possibly a year without a PlanPoll meeting, definitely eight months, nine months. Just putting that out there that, again, this, you know, I'm always going to emphasize as much local planning as possible. We care about us, our community knows best. That's the history of planning in this country, and we should be able to continue to define our own planning. And just the very fact that the system that's supposed to be set up for us to be coordinating doesn't even seem to be allowing all the voices at the table concerns me.
Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So it's kind of interesting. I am on the the KRCC transportation policy. And we also have not been meeting all that often. And so I just wonder if, I would agree, I think, you know, finding out more about the sort of the current purpose and role of those meetings, the groups that meet would be good. I've had a little bit of sense that the Transportation Policy Group meets and more or less rubber stamps what TransTech has done. And I've been confident to a point that it has always been a very good process at TransTech. And but at the same time, it just is interesting that I'm not clear what our, what our real role is as electeds in that, in that body. The thing that I wanted to come up with, I don't know, are we kind of at the end of this agenda item, or are we going back to the 10 questions? So I'll just say that a question that I have continuing on from the 10 questions is, you know, what are the major groups of items still not, still out there for both the planning commission and the city council, or maybe just the city council, to decide on in addition to these policy questions that were posed to us, you know, a long time ago? So it's clear that we haven't gotten outside of the Winslow subarea yet, but what's not in these 10 questions that, you know, will need to be decided before we can turn in a complete a complete comprehensive plan update? Thank you.
I'd like Director Charnas to take a give some perspective from her point of view. We've heard that the work of the planning commission is going forward, partially in subcommittees, working closely with Joe Tovar. They they're getting near the goal, it seems to me. I I wonder if they can get some perspective or some messaging from LMN, because LMN has its key role in connection with everything that the planning commission presents to them. And I wonder, can you, Patty, can you shed any light on that? What's, what's LMN's? We've seen a work plan, but where are they with it?
Yeah. So through the chair, there are a couple of different questions for the planning director. And one is the relationship with LMN and Joe Tovar and what's going forward. And I think Councilmember Schneider wanted to know what other things are embedded in here that we need to focus on. I think that was the point.
Thank you, City Manager. So to Councilmember Schneider's question about what remains, because some of those policy questions clearly addressed things outside of the Winslow subarea. Staff formulated early on when they were preparing the draft environmental impact statement that the Winslow subarea should be assumed and worked on to try to assume most, if not all, of the growth targets, especially with this brand new, never having been required before, capacity analysis for lands for affordable housing at different affordability levels. So we know that Winslow and the work in Winslow, if it can get completed, may make the balance of the updates, the review and revise if necessary. If it's not necessary, you don't need to update your comprehensive plan. So if Winslow, the subarea plan, which hasn't been updated since 2009, gets completed and addresses most, if not all, of our targets that are required under state law, then the balance of the work for the conservation area, for the comprehensive plan elements, is extremely straightforward and quite frankly, limited. If we don't need to identify the next thing that we would densify, our neighborhood centers in Rolling Bay, Lynnwood, and Island Center, if we don't need to do anything there, those situations are very well identified and articulated in our existing plan. As to what LMN can do as a complement to what our planning consultant, Joe Tovar, is doing, whose contract does end hard stop at the end of October. LMN does three things. They do mapping really well, better than we can. They do analysis. They have access to services and expertise that staff does not have on the analytical side of things. And then LMN can help with graphics and outreach, which, you know, our abilities are quite constrained. Thanks.
It's, it's my assumption that LMN staff will, will write the final chapter describing the preferred alternative. And that's everything except the introduction leading up to that is drafted, available on the website. Very interesting material. A lot of, a lot of fundamental information that I wish more people were aware of. But the capstone is it's got, it will pull an awful lot together, and it will kind of upstage whatever changes are needed in the comprehensive plan, in the land use and the housing chapter, elements of the comprehensive plan. But I did, just for my colleagues here in the public, I did just learn at the steering committee that the environmental element and the critical areas chapter of the municipal code will need careful attention before we're done. That's something that I had thought would be further off after the completion of the comprehensive plan. So that's down the road, and that will, that will require work in the planning commission. There and this is not make-work. This is real work. But it's if I were on the planning commission now, I would be burnt out. So I thank them for all that they're doing. So enough said maybe about our work here tonight. Are there other thoughts before we move on to the council reports? I guess we've covered a lot of ground. I appreciate it, Patty. Thank you for your management of it all. Let's move to the committee reports. Anyone have things to say? Councilmember Milwaukee first, maybe?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Mayor Matthews?
My monthly liaison work with the senior center was last Wednesday, and they are making positive progress toward developing the senior center, the revised one.
Mayor Matthews?
So we have, oh my gosh, let's see, our, this had a green freeze. Come back to me. Sorry about that. I totally forgot.
Okay. Councilmember Dietz?
Oh, okay. I'm sure it'll come to you. So just a few things. First, I just wanted to recognize last Thursday's planning commission meeting honors the members, seven, well, seven and a half hours of meeting, four hours of public comment, and quite a long deliberation. That meeting went to 1:30 a.m. I believe that's some sort of record. So I just, I think sometimes when people, they look at committees and council, and maybe they just think, well, we just do our work. But this was, to me, was above and beyond the call of duty. I commend the planning commission. I just, I feel they deserve, and it doesn't matter where the votes landed, the fact that all, there were six of them hung in there to the very end, deliberated. I watched it online, and it was hard enough just to watch it from my cell phone. But I just want to say that. A shout out to the planning commission, seriously. Thursday, I have a Kitsap Regional, Kitsap Economic Development, it was a KEDA, what do we stand for? Yeah, thank you. Our board retreat this Thursday, perhaps Mayor, you're going to that as well. So that's, looking forward to that. And then I just want to highlight something that my colleagues know, because I sent a message to everybody. This, today, I met with Mike Burns, the owner of 251 Winslow Way West Property. This was a site that there was to be consideration for a hotel, but it was, that did not advance. And Sarah Blossom joined me in that meeting. And Mr. Burns told me, told us that the property is available for purchase by the city for a large-scale affordable housing project. He also told us he's not interested in a land swap with 625 Winslow to do a hotel. Mr. Burns is no longer interested in being, building a hotel on Bainbridge. So for me, this is all very good news, where we now have another viable site to do a affordable housing project in Winslow. Now, I'm just one of seven, but I hope that we can work diligently to find a way that two projects can work, be done in parallel, not in competition, at least for the time being.
I remember, you jogged my memory, Councilmember Dietz. So today I went to the ribbon cutting at Nordic Cottages, which is a eight-unit, small, holesbow, right in town there. A really cool project to see and compare and contrast a little bit, thinking about, you know, obviously, they have different revenue and big box stores and all of that good stuff. But it was good to see the community come together. And once we do this larger one, it'll be really cool to reimagine some of those small in-neighborhood type things. This one is, I think, for seniors, or, you know, they're really targeted and very beautiful. It was designed by Matthew Coats, and he was very, it was just really, really cool project. So it was good to see everyone and be there. And then HRB has an event this Thursday, I believe, at Islandwood. And, well, we'll be at the KEDA event. And then I also wanted to highlight the planning commission meeting. We were here until 1:30 in the morning, and it was one of the best chaired meetings I've seen. I could not imagine what could have been going through Chair Blossom's head at the moment, but she just got through it really, really well. Everyone, I thought, was heard. It was orderly. It felt like community. It didn't feel like a battle. So no matter where you are, and thinking about where the votes came down, I just thought it was a really good example of community coming together, engaging, and having their voices heard. To extend that, I don't know how to get this out because I'm not on social media or Facebook anymore. So you'll have to, I guess, reach out if you're interested. I have been meeting folks for coffee, or just to sit for half an hour, or anything at the 625 site. There's a bench there. It's like a bench, a little parked bench and table right there on that corner. It's, I work across the street, so I've just been bringing some coffee over. So if there's a time of day, I'm trying to do it anytime, because this morning was, I was there at 8:30 or some, for folks who are doing drop-off for school. If you have a group of people who have questions, just reach out. You can find me online on my website, or on the city's website, my information. And then that's it. And then I wanted to just clarify and apologize to Councilmember Hytopolis. I was saying the fix-your-face is what my mom used to say to me for all of us, like, fix your face. Fix your, like, for, and then I said, we need to watch how we are looking. It wasn't you fix your face. So that would be totally different than fixing our faces and how we're looking up here in rolling eyes and that sort of thing. So we are all here to work together. I think it sometimes gets misconstrued because we already had an email from that, thinking that we are keeping the public in the dark over live boards, which was not what's happening in any way. Live boards were here, part of the process, all involved in the decision. Our staff member spends a lot of time down there, as do I with Ray. So I think sometimes how we you know, telegraph what's going on up here, it might give anxiety to folks when there shouldn't be any there. So that was it.
Councilmember Schneider, and then Councilwoman Ramarawaki.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I wanted just to go over the Transportation Policy Board meeting that I went to last Thursday. Again, I really enjoy being there in person. I was able to ask a couple of questions ahead of time, and then a couple of questions after the fact, you know, without mics being on and all that. It was really great. So the, the big thing that's happening is that the regional transportation, the RTP, regional transportation plan, which is looking forward to 2040 or 2050, I can't remember now, but it's a long time, is well underway. And the job that we were doing this time around was trying to have the board make recommendations for the balance between there's a gap, there's like a 21% gap, a $78 billion gap between if we wanted to do everything that jurisdictions have said they want to do. We would have $78 billion to come up with, which is a 21% gap. So what our job was this time was to say, well, are we, how do we want to balance that? And we had already indicated the previous meeting that it was going to be a mix. So we didn't want all or, all or nothing. And a new option came up. What I guess I want to share with this group is that there is a very solid support for maintenance as a priority, so that we don't lose ground on investments that we've made in the past. This partial the, the two plan to be, I think, is what, a new plan came in, is creating that that balance. And there are, oh, shoot, I just lost it. Where to go? There are three different pieces. All right, I'm just going to do this from memory. Three different categories. So there's the regional projects. And I don't know if we have any regional projects in this list. If we don't, we got to get them in now or forever hold our peace. So I'm assuming that the Sound to Olympics Trail is in there, but I'd, I'd love to get, I'd love to find out for sure. And then what's called programmatic, and this was a term that was a little concerning for me. I didn't understand programmatic. But programmatic is basically what everybody is doing at the, at the local level. And so, you know, we don't, we don't have to worry about that. I'm not sure how the funding goes for that. But, and then the last one is the maintenance piece. So what we will be doing next month is coming up with how, with this smaller gap now that we have identified, how are we going to fund that? What, what are our recommendations for funding it? So again, I just wanted to share that this is this is the time. Because it will be finalized in, in November, as our recommendation to the larger board. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Marawaki, then Councilperson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Witslin, and thank you, Mayor Matthews. You reminded me, I will be attending the Housing Resources Bainbridge Gathering at Islandwood this Thursday, and their guest speaker is the Majority Whip of the Washington State House of Representatives, Representative Alex Ramel. And he will be talking about affordable housing, and also a personal story about what affordable housing has done for him as a single father, devoted community member, and an advocate for housing environment. So I'm really looking forward to hearing that keynote speech.
Good one.
Mayor Matthews, and then Councilmember Hytopolis.
This was the main thing that I was trying to think of, but I couldn't think. The Quilt Festival this weekend, and Arts and Humanities Bainbridge put on the Creative Thread Festival. And for some reason, I thought, delusional confidence, that I could dye yarn, live dye yarn in the square, and it worked, and it was fun, and I can't wait to do it again. So everyone who was at the Creative Thread Festival, and all the fiber folks and quilt folks, it was just a beautiful weekend of seeing everyone's art.
Councilwoman Hytopolis?
Well, I don't normally say much of this topic, but since it seems like it's becoming sort of a good-of-the-order, I wanted to make a couple of comments. One, I wanted to thank Sarah Blossom for coming up with the idea of locating the 625 project on the other end of Winslow Way. And I also just wanted to state that, also, yeah, Sarah's idea, and she approached Mr. Burns. And I also just wanted to say that I have tried very hard for the last six years or five years or so to accept how we've been doing process here. And with the level of blow-up that's been happening to the community these days with regards to the lack of transparency and public process, I apologize, but I am going to continue to call it out.
Okay. I'd like to summarize a few things that I've been involved in. This morning was the last meeting in Bremerton of the committee that evaluated and, and made decisions on applications for funding for a variety of projects, housing projects and repair projects and the like, all to achieve more affordable housing, more satisfactory and effective affordable housing. There were projects affecting Bainbridge directly, and that was good to participate in. The, there was less money than was needed to fund all of the projects, but good decisions were made in a fairly, very congenial and efficient way. So I came away ahead of the time that I thought I would be dedicating to that day. Other things, I want to comment on the Planning Commission meeting. I was there, not to the very end, but very close to the end. I was sitting right down there, and after the event, Olivia Hall explained to me why she was beckoning to me to come over and sit on the other side of the aisle there. I think she saw me nodding off.
Yes.
No. She was concerned that I was losing it. I wasn't, I wasn't, I thought I was paying perfect, good attention. Of course, I was supposed to be kind of stone-faced and not engaged in any give and take with, with the main action or with the people making public comment. There was a very robust discussion. It was, to some extent, a replay of what we heard in our Tuesday Planning Commission, in our Tuesday council meeting. But there were many other voices heard, and I hope people were listening to people who didn't quite agree with them, because I was listening to the back and forth, and the many things that we as council members need to weigh as we're going forward, not only with the 625 Winslow Way project, but other things as well. It's, it's tough, and we will be focusing in fairly short order on hard decisions. But we got a good basis for, for those decisions. I want to comment on the quilt, quilt festival.
Oh.
The quilt that I loved, and I think it may have been made by a woman just up the slope from me, Liz, I'm not, she, Liz Lipsler is the way I know her, but the other name, it was a quilt, it was a quilt called Ampersand, or it was a quilt titled "Yes, And." And there was every, every this and that that you could imagine. Many things I had never thought of before, put together. Tips and tricks, what is that? There, it was so rich and so affirmative about complexity and give and take, all the rest of it. I want to have that quilt, I certainly want to have a picture of it. So that, that was, that lifted my spirits way high. Also, on, in the evening on that Saturday, I went to Bainbridge Performing Arts for the solo performance by Joel Underwood, telling the story of the last days of one of our greatest songwriters. Not junior, but Hank Williams himself. And very good performances of the wide array of songs that Hank Williams managed to create in a very truncated and troubled life. But I loved that. I won't be going to the event, Housing Resources Bainbridge event on Thursday because the Utility Advisory Committee is meeting, and they will be discussing the close-to-final draft of the utilities element for the comprehensive plan. That's been the work of a lot of careful attention over, over several months. And it's important work that will fit right into the Planning Commission's assembly of the comprehensive plan. That's all I need to say, I think.